Weber Lynchburg, and that's why I'm here tonight. First, I want to thank you all for coming. And before I get started, I'll introduce Robert Taylor over here in the Argyle sweater. He is the consultant with Dutton &amp; Associates out of Charlottesville. And he prepared the document that we're here to talk about this evening. It's called a National Register nomination.
Excuse me?
Yes?
For the recording, could you use the microphone?
Oh, sure, sure.
Either these two or that one?
Can I stand and?
If you can stand, use this one right here.
All right.
Stop going to the speakers, just to the.
All right, okay, thank you, sir. Mike Pulis, once again. For the record, so, Robert wrote the National Register nomination that basically what it's intended to accomplish is an expansion of an existing historic district. And that was called the Lower Basin Historic District. And it runs along, well, you got the map behind you here. Concord Turnpike comes up to Main Street, makes a turn to the west, and includes a few more buildings up on Main Street. At DHR, we helped vet this boundary so that it's justifiable in terms of the National Register and what they require. They have very strict requirements about drawing boundaries. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. The purpose of this meeting is so that the Historic District nomination can be presented at a quarterly State Review Board and Historic Review Board meeting for listing on the national and state registers. That meeting is going to be held next month, March 16th, in Richmond. Anybody is welcome to attend those meetings. Anybody, property owner in the district, is welcome to object to this designation. And I'll tell you more about how to do that. So this meeting is required by law and to give interested property owners an opportunity to understand the district nomination proposal. I'm here to answer any questions you have to the best of my ability. If you ask questions I don't know the answers to, I will get those answers and get back to you quickly, promptly. So what is the National Register of Historic Places? This is about the only thing I really need to read to you, and it's a definition of what the National Register is. It's not too long, bear with me. The National Register is the official federal list of districts, sites, buildings, structures, and objects significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, and culture. National Register properties have significance to the prehistory or history of their community, state, or the nation. The register is administered by the National Park Service. Nominations for listing historic properties come from the state Historic Preservation Officers. That is my director of our agency, Julie Langen, in the state of Virginia, in the Commonwealth, except for properties owned or controlled by the United States government. The state Historic Preservation Office or officers, we just call the SHPO. While SHPOs nominate properties for National Register listing, private individuals and organizations, local governments, and American Indian tribes can initiate the process and prepare the necessary documentation. A professional review board in each state considers each property proposed for listing and makes a recommendation on its eligibility. Communities having a certified local historic preservation program called Certified Local Governments, or CLGs, also make recommendations to the SHPO on the eligibility of properties within their community. For the record, the city of Lynchburg does have that status, Certified Local Government, CLG status. That basically just means that they try to take a close role in projects and things that affect historic preservation within the city. The proposed designation is purely honorary and does not restrict or put obligations on owners, property owners, or local governments, but can facilitate revitalization efforts. Revitalization efforts. Let me read that one more time. "The proposed designation is purely honorary and does not restrict or put obligations on property owners or the local government, but can facilitate revitalization efforts." As I mentioned, this hearing is required by state law. And let's see, this is an outline that I'm required to follow so that you get all the pertinent information that you need here tonight. If you own property in the district or property adjacent to the district, you should have received an email, a letter, a mailed letter from our Richmond office that invited you to this meeting that has some explanatory information about the National Registers and your right to object to the designation. Let's see, so this project was funded by a private developer who hired Mr. Taylor to do this nomination. And I don't know the private developer, but I'm gathering that that might be this gentleman here. So this is totally normal. And the reason for this is to make rehabilitation tax credits available to properties in the district. Many times, individual buildings are not eligible on their own, so in order to get them a designation that will make the tax credits available, we look at a historic district, which is essentially a collection of buildings that are significant as a collection and not necessarily significant on their own. Within the city of Lynchburg, there's many historic districts that are already listed. I live in the city of Roanoke where we have seventeen listed historic districts. And there's more coming along all the time. It's a good idea to pursue these National Register listings because essentially, it's a matter of fairness. Is it fair that everybody on Rivermont Avenue should have access to historic tax credits? Well, other parts of the town do not. You know, I don't know that it is, but all the city or town can do is work towards listing historic districts. They can't be done automatically, it takes time. So little by little, historic districts are usually identified, evaluated, and listed. That goes on here in Lynchburg, and every city in Virginia, and probably just about every city in the country. All right. A couple notes about how the nomination comes to be written and prepared. The state of Virginia, we require that every building in a historic district is subject to architectural survey. So when Mr. Taylor undertook this project, we required that he look at every building individually and do a site, a survey record for each building. And he did that. So that's another benefit of listing a historic district is now that we have a good amount of accurate information about each building that we wouldn't have had had that requirement not existed. We think it's a really important step in the process. All of that information, that includes photos, descriptions, and some history, all that information resides in a archives file in our Richmond office. And eventually, those records are migrated into the state archives, but they're there for permanent. Within each historic district, every building is assigned a status of either contributing or non-contributing. It could be a building, it could be a site, like an archaeological site or a park, it could be a structure, like a stone wall or a bridge. It could be an object, like a statue or a fountain. But any of these resource types, all of those resource types are listed individually in the center of the National Register nomination, a part that's designated the inventory. So essentially, there's a list of every single building, structure, object, and site in every historic district within the inventory in each nomination. Everyone follow me so far? Any questions? Okay. So, within that, yes, yes, sir?
What's the impact of being a contributing building?
Okay. I'm getting to that. Thank you for that question. That's just what I was about to talk about. Within every inventory, every building is assigned to either contributing or non-contributing status. If a building is built within a period of significance, this part gets a little tricky to explain. Every district gets assigned a period of significance, and this is based on National Register requirements, too. But the period of significance usually begins when the oldest building was first constructed and often ends when the last building was constructed, or when something dramatic happened to the district, like, well, or maybe the district was built out. Say the first building was built in 1844, and the last building was built in 1962, that might be the period of significance. For this particular nomination, do you happen to know offhand, Robert?
1959.
It's a nineteen, ends in 1959.
Right, right. And that's tied to a few different events. It's not the absolute last building, there are a couple later than that, but that was the date of the last building that fits within the character of what is being considered historic here, warehouses and et cetera. And so that's when it was drawn off. Anything after that would be considered non-contributing because they either don't match the same development patterns or architectural styles that fit within and add to, you know, the historic character of the district. So 1959.
Okay, thank you. So it begins in 1850 and ends in 1959. So if your building, site, structure, or object was built within that period of significance, hundred-and-nine-year period of significance, and it hasn't been dramatically changed, changed to the point where it's no longer recognizable as its historic self, where it's just been rather egregiously changed or obscured?
In my.
Yes?
Fifty years generally the cutoff that would be considered potentially contributing to this.
Right. So if a building is less than fifty years old, it's automatically non-contributing. But in this case, since the period of significance ends in 1959, anything built after 1959 is non-contributing, at least for the time being. Like, years from now, we can update that period of significance, and buildings that weren't old enough now will be at least fifty years old, and then they can become contributing buildings. So it's all based on the date they were built and whether or not they've been seriously impacted by modifications. So if they're built in a period of significance and not terribly modified, they're contributing buildings. If not, they're non-contributing buildings. Non-contributing buildings are not eligible for rehabilitation tax credits. They're essentially just kind of bystanders or interlopers until they become old enough to be called contributing. In this case, in a lot of cases, there aren't any other buildings that are going to become contributing. Basically, we got them all. And if they're all built by 1959, then that's, they're going to stay contributing. Is this clear? I mean, every time I explain this, it comes out a little bit different, I'll be honest with you. And I've been doing this for a long time. Is that clear to you all, or shall I elaborate further? I'd be happy to do that.
Are you able to say what's the one non-contributing resource and structure?
Yeah, it's the big, it was a motel complex, I think it's condos now.
Oh, yeah.
The Travelodge.
That's been quite altered quite a bit. It's modernized quite a bit. It really doesn't look like a historic building at this point. So, you know, sometimes we call buildings non-contributing because of a lot of changes that are reversible. And if somebody was to buy the building and undo some of those changes, like sometimes in the 1960s and 70s, they put up a screen across the facade, some kind of a metallic screen, and it completely obscures the facade. So that building would be non-contributing right now because the historic facade cannot be seen. But that screen could be taken down, and chances are, the facade behind it is still in reparable condition. So if somebody takes the screen down, now the building's contributing. That's something that we can do easily in-house at DHR. You don't need to hire a consultant for us to reevaluate the contributing status of a building. Okay? All right. So, as I said, the district boundaries are determined using guidelines set forth by the National Park Service, where the National Register is contained at the Park Service. So their rules for drawing boundaries are, you try to encompass the best concentration of contributing properties that you can, and you omit as many non-contributing properties as you can. This can be a tricky chore. And so what you're doing is you're trying to draw out non-contributing properties and draw in contributing properties, but you can't go a great distance from one contributing property to the next. The general rule of thumb for cities is three city lots. If I go, if there's three vacant city lots between two contributing properties, then I can draw the bound, I can cut the boundary off there. I don't have to jump those lots. We usually are fairly flexible, as much as we can be about that. Sometimes there's a good reason why there's space between two contributing buildings. But the point being is that we have to justify the boundary in the nomination. There's a part of the nomination called the boundary justification. The Park Service looks very closely at that, and they want to know, why did we draw the boundary where we did? And so it's something that we have to follow guidelines. We don't have a lot of leeway with that. Sometimes property owners get drawn in when they don't want to be. Sometimes they get drawn out when they don't want to be. But that's all because of the rules affecting the guidelines, guidelines affecting how the boundary is drawn. Okay, let's see. Construction dates that you'll see in the inventory. A lot of times, people look in the inventory and they'll see C period 1940, circa 1940. But you happen to know it was built in 1947? Let's not, let's agree to not worry about that. These are estimates. And if you have information about the accurate construction date, that's great, and you'll want that information if you embark on a tax credit project. But for the purposes of the National Register, a good educated guess is acceptable. And we generally don't go back and change the dates in nominations because somebody brought the correct date to us. If we did that, we'd be doing this all the time. We have thousands of historic districts, or at least hundreds, all over this state. And we just, we can't go back and change the day. If it's way off, we'll do it, you know, if it's thirty, forty years off. But let's agree not to quibble over five or seven years, okay? It really doesn't affect anything. All right, almost done here, believe it or not. What are the benefits and the process of the Virginia and National designation? First of all, I probably didn't make clear at the beginning that this is a, this is an application for both registers, the state level and the National Register. The state-level register is called the Virginia Landmarks Register. The National Register is called the National Register of Historic Places. This is an application for both. It's a one application, goes all the way through the state, and then we forward it to the National Park Service for listing on a National Register. So it's all one process. On March 16th, this district will be on the Virginia Landmarks Register because that's the date that the two boards meet to approve the nomination. Then it'll be about another two months, or actually, probably the end of May, before it's listed on a National Register of Historic Places. The reason is, is after March 16th, we still may have some shoring up to do of our nominations from the March board meeting. The boards meet quarterly, four times a year. So they look at a quarter's worth of nominations, and then our staff in Richmond has some shoring up to do and get things in, you know, prepared to send them all to the Park Service in one package. And that usually takes two or three weeks. So by early April, the nomination will be en route to the National Park Service. And then they're supposed to either respond with technical comments, like, you didn't dot some i's and cross some t's, please fix that and send it back. Sometimes they do that, not very often. But they have to at least respond within forty days, forty-five days of receiving the nomination. So that's why I'm saying by the end of May, maybe a little sooner, maybe a week or two later, but that's probably a pretty sound guess. That's the process. On March 16th, there's two boards that I, I'll be there in Richmond to present this nomination to. It's two boards that meet at a long table, about seven members on each board. One is the State Review Board. Their members are appointed by our director, Julie Langen, Director of the Department of Historic Resources. The other board is the Historic Resources Board, whose members are appointed by the governor. Historic Resources Board, one of their main reasons for existing is to protect, watch out, protect the property rights of property owners in Virginia. And they look over everything very carefully. And if they feel that somebody is being infringed upon, they can, you know, they can hold the nomination up. But the way that the approval process works is, a majority of property owners have to essentially support the nomination or not object. A majority of property owners cannot object to the nomination. If a majority do object, it won't go forward. What is a majority? A majority is fifty percent plus one. So, so I've never had, in twenty-two years with the department, I've never had a historic district opposed to the point where it did not go forward. Now, I cover southwest Virginia. In northern Virginia, there have been one or two where there are enough objections to stop one from going forward. But it doesn't happen very often. And the reason is, there really is no downside to this. What are the National Registers? What do we hope for? What do we hope they're going to do? Right now, the historic rehabilitation tax credits are kind of driving historic district nominations. We want to make those historic district tax credits, those historic rehab tax credits to everybody who can use them. They can be quite lucrative. They have a lot to do with the fortunes of a city and the revitalization of a city. In Lynchburg, they've had a lot of good effects. There's plenty of tax credit buildings here all around us where we are tonight, buildings that have been rehabbed and brought back to life, back on its tax rolls, bringing in tax revenue to the city, increasing the property values of, around them, and making it a more vibrant and attractive place for people to live and work. I don't know the figures on Lynchburg, but in the city of Roanoke, there's been over a hundred million dollars worth of tax credits, just in the city of Roanoke alone. I've been in Roanoke for twenty-two years, and I can tell you, the city has changed dramatically. The downtown area has changed dramatically. And that has a great deal to do with the availability of these tax credits. These tax credits are not available to properties that are not on the registers. A property can qualify by itself, but most buildings downtown are not going to be able to do that. Buildings that are nominated individually either stand apart from historic districts or are highly significant in their own right, something like Sandusky Museum or something, Poplar Forest. There are some individually listed buildings downtown as well. So, the tax credits are the big deal right now. That's the big financial thing that's helping. The other thing is, is that historic districts really do foster civic pride and heritage and recognition in the history of a place. If you put a sign up at both ends of the district, people that drive through that district every day will suddenly have, be enlightened, that, hey, this is actually an important historic place. I drive through here every day, but it never really occurred to me. They're just a bunch of old buildings to me. But as Robert has written here in this nomination, there's a lot of history involved with these places. And he's written about it here. This resource will be listed, this will be posted on the internet for, from now on, well, basically after it clears the Park Service. It'll be, it'll be posted on the internet for everybody to see and to consult. So it'll end up being a very helpful document. The other thing is, this work expedites federal project review. When, let's say there's a power line, a transmission line, or something that involves federal dollars, public money, or there's a permitting process or licensing that is a federal process, environmental laws dictate that you have to go out or send somebody out, a consultant like Robert, to look at the surroundings within what they call an area of potential effect, APE. And if they find any buildings that they think are historic, then they have to bring that forward, and that will be considered in that federal processing or licensing. And in order to protect them, because by federal law, buildings are treated as part of the environment, just like an endangered fish. So whether or not we did this designation, that would still be true. If somebody, if Appalachian Power wants to run a power line through here, then that federal review process has to take place. And they could have any finding, you know, they could have a finding that none of this is important, and now the city is in trouble trying to protect its historic building stock from demolition by a power line company. But in this case, it's, we've been proactive. We've surveyed everything, we've said it was eligible, and now it's being listed. So when that federal permitting or federal licensing happens, it'll already be on the books. It doesn't matter what their consultant says, we already know it's historic. So it's protected from federal projects like it may not have been if this wasn't done. But chances are, when the federal process happened, they would have looked at it and said, yes, there's an eligible historic district there, we need to do what we can to minimize the impact to it. So, again, whether we listed this here or not, that federal process still has to occur. What we've done was save the government some money by already saying, look no further than this document right here. It's all here. The case for significance has already been made, the state approved it, the federal government approved it. What more do you need to know? You need to minimize impact to these properties. That's part of the law. All right, so, one more time, I will say, what does this designation not do? It does not restrict private property owners' disposition of their property. You can do anything you want to with your property, including tear it down. We sure hope that you won't, but it's, you're the driver, you're the property owner, you can do anything that you want. Only thing that can stop you from doing that is a local overlay zoning ordinance, which does not exist for this district. And that cannot happen without a public process, and there's no plan for that to happen. And there's no plan for that to happen. There's historic districts all over town that don't have that overlay. Cities don't necessarily seek to increase their overlay because it puts a lot of burden on their staff. And, and it's expensive to oversee large areas of the city. So what they tend to do is look out for the, the most important commercial districts where property values can plummet with the loss of a building or something like that. It doesn't obligate the local government to do anything. It doesn't obligate private property owners to do anything. You don't have to open your property to the public. You don't have to allow trespassers. You don't have to undergo review if you want to make a change to your building. You don't have to contact us for any reason. You just go about your life like you always did. There are people in historic districts all over the state that don't even know they're in historic districts because it never put any impact on them. It never did anything to restrict them, so they don't even know they're in one. Some historic districts have been on the books since the sixties and seventies, and it never occurred to people they're in a historic district because it never impinged on them in any way. So, lastly, the objection process, if you wish to object, you need, if a profit, private property owner objects to this designation of the district by notarized letter to the Director of our Agency, Julie Langen, if a majority object, as I said earlier, the nomination will not go forward. And that's it. I followed my, my outline. I think I told you everything that's pertinent or important. I've honed this outline after many years of questions so that, you know, anticipating questions that I might receive tonight. But I'm happy to take any further questions or re-explain or re-elaborate on anything that I've said. Or if you have any questions about the boundary or anything like that. Yes, sir?
Yeah, this is all a process to designate the whole area. Now, who initiates the process? Is that from the Commonwealth of Virginia?
No, in this-
Individuals or corporations?
Well, like I said, any, anybody can initiate the process. The state normally does not initiate the process. It's, it's almost always initiated at the local level. And in this case-
Is that private information?
No, 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 nothing's, no. Nothing about this is private information.
Who initiated this?
I, I already, I already said, I already said so.
I did, tell me what.
Do you own property in here?
Yes.
So he initiated this, he initiated this process because he wants to use, and even if he didn't want to use the tax credits, he could still initiate the process. Maybe he's just really proud of his building and he wants it to be recognized. And he wants the historic district to be preserved, you know, for people to take pride in the historic district. It doesn't have anything to do with tax credits, really. But it enables the availability of tax credits. And that really ultimately was the purpose of what we're doing here, is to make tax credits available to these buildings so that they can be rehabbed and revitalized.
Do you own more than one building?
Yeah, I own quite a few buildings. Yes.
In the district and outside the district. I remember meeting you before now, that's right. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I heard his reason for the possibility of you changing this into a historic district. But can I ask you here, review your reason?
Our reason, knowing that, that tax credits, it helps you offset the cost of revitalizing. If not, most of these buildings downtown would never be revitalized. It allows you to get back forty-five percent of the cost of what you spent into the project. And it makes for a much nicer project because it helps.
I'll, I'll expand on that just a bit, too. Just for tax credits, you have to do it to keep, in keeping with the historic character of the building. So it's not just, I'm gonna get an old building and I'm gonna-
Modernize it.
Yeah, modernize it, do whatever you want. It has to be done in keeping with the character of the building, and that's all reviewed as a part of a separate process, with DHR and the National Park Service review. Every aspect of it, do these windows match type of windows that were there originally? Or is the brickwork gonna be restored as opposed to covering it with cement or stuff? So everything, when you do a tax credit, you have to really be doing it on the up and up to preserve the historic character of the building. So that it is a regulated and reviewed process to keep things, keep things-
The, the tax credits are an incentive for the property owner to do the right thing by the building. In other words, keep the historic materials and character as intact as possible. That's the give and take there. We give you the tax credits, you follow the rules. The rules are called the Secretary of the Interior's Standards for Rehabilitation. You can Google that, just, you could just put in Secretary Standards, and you'll find all kinds of guidance literature about what that means. But essentially, it's ten rules, it's ten rules that are designed to keep the historic materials and character of a historic building intact. And that's what, that's what Mr. Hill is, is trying to do.
And anyone who owns property in that, makes the value goes up a lot because somebody else is gonna show up and wanna buy your property.
Yeah. And, and if you have a property that you want to sell, that's an excellent marketing tool, to be able to say, hey, this, this building's already listed. So if you buy this building and invest in it, you can recoup tax credits on your work. It's already ready for you, it's, it's ready to go. When somebody like Mr. Hill acquires our property, Mr. West, I'm sorry. When Mr. West acquires our property that's outside of a historic district, and he wants to use tax credits, then he has to figure out how to make that happen. And sometimes, it, it can't happen. Sometimes, it does. But that's, that's the whole idea.
I'm aware of tax credit, uh, historical district because of how it's created.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
You mentioned that when Mr. Taylor did the architectural survey, I think is what you called it, you collected a lot of information about each of the buildings. And I think you said that that's deposited in Richmond. Are we able to see what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. And I can tell you a little bit more about that. So, I mean, the, the survey, as it's called, is when we go out, and this is all coming from public data, we're not going into properties and buildings and whatnot. But we're, we're taking pictures of the building in terms of how it sits on the street. It's saying facade details. We write a description, say the building is this particular style, is built in this date based on what we see, or if there's other records available. You know, the type of windows, just descriptive data like that. And then a couple representative photos. And that goes into, as Mike said, that's called VCRS, the Virginia Cultural Resource Information System. It's an online database that, that's run by DHR. And it has the information on all buildings and archaeology sites. Anything that's historic recorded in the state. And you can go in there and you can see how the building is described and get photos. Some records that were done before VCRS was live and active are still hard to copy. And I know staff there's actively scanning on the, the particular building. It's not been scanned yet. You can reach out to the Art Archive Department there and they'll be happy to scan it and report to you.
Is that where the, the state or the, or the federal agency would go to determine what you have to do? What the criteria would be to qualify for these tax credits? Or, you know, is it in keeping, as you said, with, with the historical nature of the building?
It is, yeah. So in the nomination, there's an inventory which draws all the data from those surveys. The building was built in X date, is this style. And then, is that, does that conform to what the nomination is saying? Or the, is the significance of the district telling you? Has the period significance with N two fifty? That inventory would all have the building date plates for everything. And so they would see something that before N two fifty, you can qualify for it.
I got a question.
Yes.
If a building's in floodplain, designate it.
If a building is in the floodplain, we- the honest answer to that is, we don't care. It's not our business. It's not what we're doing. And we only care if it's historic or not. If it's in a floodplain, I mean, it just doesn't change the calculus of how we go about our work. We, we hope that it can be preserved and saved if it's historic. But honestly, we don't take that into consideration. Yeah, we, we just don't.
It actually lowers the cost of getting flood insurance, is what it actually does. By being historic nominated, that was one reason that I went through this process, to make it qualify for insurance. And make sure insurance costs in floodway really reduced. So it makes it affordable.
It could help.
Yeah, yeah, it does help.
But, but when we're doing the nomination, we don't take that into consideration at all. We just look at if it's historic or not. And is it close enough to be included with the other buildings?
Are we able to get a copy of the application itself now?
Yes. You have my card, or, yes. Just contact me, and I'll send it to you tomorrow. It'll be still a draft, still in draft form until it, until it clears the board and National Park Service. But it's unlikely to be changed in any significant way. I'll give you the draft now. And if you want the final copy, talk to me then. I'll, I'll make sure that you get it. It'll be posted on our website as well. I can also, if you want the individual property record, there may have been one, like Robert said, before he got to it. But we know that there's one now because he either updated it or created a new one. And so I can, I could send you that tomorrow. Yeah, just let me, just send me the address, and I will send you the property record. And as a PDF, I'll email it to you tomorrow.
Is, is there a list of all the properties that will be in this proposed expanded district in the application?
Yes, that's the inventory. That's the midsection of the nomination. Where everything, every building is identified as contributing or non-contributing. Yep.
And then each building will also have a DHR designator number, and that's how they inventory them in the system.
Yep.
So you can find your, your address, your street and your address, find the DHR ID, and then that's how you can look it up.
Here's, here's the, the inventory, one page from the inventory. And this is eighteen oh five Concord Turnpike. And there's a lot of different buildings that are part of that property. And every one of those buildings is listed individually with either contributing or non-contributing. And that could be even just, if it's like an impermanent shed, maybe we, we, it's not something that we necessarily have to list. But anything that's actually built on a, on a foundation is listed. Yes, sir?
Was anybody informed before they did this that they would be doing, could see it happening? Because I didn't know anything about it till I got a load of the flood in the lake. Nobody knew about it.
I don't, I, I, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you.
I can, I can speak just a bit to that. So we, we did not, when we were working on this nomination, there was already a previous step, which Mike did get into, not to go over it, but- So there's a, what they call PIF, which is Step One in Virginia, which is a really high-level look at a district you're building. And that's when they say, DHR looks at it and say, hey, this is worth looking at further for nomination or it's not. This district had already been evaluated as potentially eligible. So it was already kind of in their system before we came on and started doing the survey and the nomination. At that point, we, we did not send out letters or notice, you know, us as a consultant. We did try to make every attempt we could in the field when we were doing our survey, whether we saw people, owners, let them know what we're doing. But we did not go around knocking on each individual door. I know that that's something, I don't know if you want to talk to you. I think DHR is now, just fairly recently, that's an additional requirement, right?
Yes.
Has, has come up a lot, you know, people wanting to know, has this something going on? And so as we're working on nominations going forward now, we are making a better effort to knock on people's doors, send out letters, get flyers out, so forth. But admittedly, no, that, that was not the case here.
Eve, have you, was there any notification process on the city's part? Things on the city website or anything like that, any notification?
We did put out a press release when we called it down the city's main page. And then we also posted on the Historic Preservation Page under our department. Admittedly, that's not as easily accessible, but the press release was put out there to reach a larger audience. And I believe that they posted on the city's social media as well.
Okay.
From that town, okay.
Right. Well, we, 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 I will say that we are, we are required to try to get the word out. But, but things like that, social media, are one of the ways that we're, we're allowed to do it. We're, we're not required to send letters to all the property owners until we get to this point, which is why you got a letter at this point. But we're not, we're not required to notify everybody by mail, you know, at the outset of the process. Yes, sir?
Just one more question. I noticed in the letter you sent, you, you take letters of support or objections, people that are supporting it, but it looks like you don't have to send a letter to support. Is it all just based on, are there objections?
Yes. I mean, we love to have letters of support, but that, yeah, it's, it's based on objections.
And do the objections need to state some basis for objection?
No. You object. Yep, that's all it needs to say. Yep. It has to be notarized. Yes. Just to make sure that somebody didn't send it and say they were you.
The list that you were talking about, not to interrupt, but the list you were talking about of all the properties, will everybody in here get one? Get a list, or they have to try to get one from y'all?
Yeah, we don't, no, we don't send out the list, but we sent you a letter that said you're on the list. And if, like I said, if you, if you want the list as part of the nomination, that inventory, anybody that asks me for it will get it promptly, either by email, however you want it.
And it'll be posted to DHR's website several weeks before the March State Review Board.
And it is currently posted on the city's website. It is, like we said, a draft format, but those documents are out there. If you'd like, we can also make you a copy before you leave this evening.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. And I, I hope that you'll support this designation. I really believe it's a good thing. And time will tell. But I think you'll see a lot of dramatic improvements in this area. So thanks again. Holler if you need anything.